We'll call to order this November the 6th, 2019 meeting the Franklin County Commission. Roll call.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
Right.
Commissioner Waymire.
Present.
Chair Howard.
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn.
Present.
Okay, if you'd all stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance, please remain standing for the invocation that'll be led by Pastor Kim Wilcox of the North Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, will you join me in prayer? Father, we come this morning just with grateful hearts, you know, we thank you for the many things you provide for each one of us, and we thank you for this season of change in the climate, the coolness, the beautiful sunshine, and Father, we know that you're Lord over all, creation, you love us so much that you provide in such a special way, and Father, we come today with a special group of people here in Franklin County, our commissioners, and Father, we ask your blessings upon each one of them, you know, they come, they serve, they're a part of what you would have be done, and Father, we know that even in their own lives, there's probably things going on that keeps them busy, that keeps them distracted, that keeps them running in many different directions, and so we ask for your provisions in their life to just allow them to have discernment over the things that need to be done, the decisions that they make, and Father, that you would bless them for their endeavors and the way that they provide, and the way they serve for those of us here in Franklin County, and so we ask for your guidance even here today as they make decisions over different things, and Father, that you would just continue to guide and direct, Father, as they serve, and we just give you praise for each one of them today, we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Any thoughts about organizational business? Okay, takes us to public comment. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Susan Nakao. Make your name and address.
I will. My name is Susan Nakao. From the Kansas cow perspective, we say the cow and put an N in front. It's actually two Japanese letters, Naka-oh means middle tail, my husband's Japanese. I'm here to talk essentially about towers, telecommunications towers, I sent you all a very long email this morning. I'm here because Larry told me I should be here. In our neighborhood, Sand Creek Estates, it's a residential estates neighborhood, last night we approved against my will, but that's okay, a neighbor's 80-foot cell tower. My concern is not whether or not he has the cell tower, my concern is that you all are doing a lot, and toxicity in the world is increasing rapidly, and we can, you know, Larry, when I was talking to him about it, he's saying, well, yeah, back in the 70s, everybody was concerned about high-power towers, you know, now everybody's concerned about internet and 4G and 5G, and what's dangerous and what's not dangerous, and there's all sorts of controversy about what is and what isn't, but if I were on the board, I would be really concerned about health and safety and trying to get a handle in front of the technology. How do, you know, no problem with my septic tank, you come out and inspect it every so often, but what are you gonna do about the towers? And apparently with the 5G technology that's coming in, right now it's considered safe, but the issue is, is that it's transmitted 100 times faster than 4G technology, and therefore it won't go as far. So if I'm living in the city of Ottawa right now in a resident, in a residential area, you make a comment in your codes that if there's a tower within five miles, but I'm, I'm actually A2 on my side of the road, there are E on the other side of the road, and we already have two internet towers that are within two to two-and-a-half miles from us, bigger towers than this gentleman was putting in, but the issue with 5G technologies and further technologies is the density, how close those towers are together, and how much all those radio waves, microwaves start to affect the public. So that's my main concern, A, that people who are in residential states, areas, should maybe have more strict requirements on the, on the input of telecommunications towers than people who are in Ag One, right? So that's mainly what I wanted to talk to you about. So when I was, I remember what Larry's talking, talking about, you know, there was a big deal over the huge electric towers. When I was in college, long time ago, plastics were gonna be the savior of the world, now plastics are an island out in the middle of the Pacific Ocean, right? When I first moved back to Kansas, I grew up in Fredonia, when I first moved back to Kansas in 2002, I could drive past those browned-up, ready soybean fields and think they were beautiful. Now, 20 years later, if that's all they're putting on them, they've got a lot of weed resistance going on. Toxicity is increasing, and so we need to get ahead of it somehow. The other question I had, and I didn't really say this directly to Larry, I did say it at last night's meeting, Larry had said I really couldn't talk about safety and health issues at that meeting on the zoning appeals board where he's asking for a variance, that I needed to come to the county commission and the planning commission, and I will go to both, okay? But for me, I've never read so many codes in my life, as I've read in the last three or four days, you guys are amazing. So as I read the codes, in order to prove a variance number four, C4, Article 24, or something like that of the county codes, says you're concerned about the health and safety of individuals. That's it, okay?
Right on the five minutes.
Was it? Thank you very much. I'm a retired professor, I can't get on five minutes very often. We just go on and on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Paul Bean.
Paul Bean, 322 South Elm, Ottawa, Kansas. I'm just here briefly to say I'm glad to finally be on board, Executive Director for Economic Development. Wants you all to know I'm gonna be working with staff and all of you, and will be working on regular reporting, which you haven't seen in the past. It's important to me that you all are getting the information you need as representatives of our community. I certainly respect the fiduciary responsibilities, I appreciate the support that the county gives to, to us to do our work, but I know comes with that is the responsibility to share with you how we're using those funds, and I welcome your oversight, and I appreciate your assistance and suggestions on things I can be doing and how I can help the county. I'm looking forward to getting out into the different areas of the county outside of not just Ottawa, but into the county, and seeing what economic opportunities we have out there, but I wanna thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to working with you, and again, I welcome your oversight, and I welcome your insight, so thank you very much.
Paul had his first executive board meeting yesterday, and Rick and I were at that, and I was gonna talk to you about it during staff reports, but I think this is gonna work really well. He's already put together a couple of documents, one detailing the expectations of FCDC board members, and the other is a conflict of interest waiver, and I'm, that in and of itself and what that means for FCDC has me so excited. I think he's gonna introduce a level of professionalism that just, you know, not to say FCDC hasn't been professional, but I think Paul's gonna amplify that even more, and he, just in that one meeting, you can tell he gets it, he understands what our priorities are, he wants to be engaged with the county as well as the other partners, so I think FCDC made an excellent choice and look forward to working with Paul.
I agree, I'm excited about the future of that organization.
It's obviously, the FCDC search was long and drawn out, and it was sometimes tense, but I think Paul is a very good example of why you need to stay the course when you're a part of those and continue to plug away and keep looking for the right person, 'cause I also agree that I think, at the end of that, we got the right person, so. All right. Anything, one else? Okay, takes us to the consent agenda. Items today that need consideration and approved on the consent agenda are the commission meeting minutes for October the 30th, and claim vouchers in the amount of $308,964.45. No tax change orders. Solid on the consent agenda today, would look for a motion to approve those.
May we approve this consent agenda?
Motions are second.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes. Okay, takes us to items of business. Our first item of business today is considering to approve the third quarter write-offs for the Franklin County Health Department. Midge.
Good morning. Well, as I mentioned last week, this time of year has been busy with immunizations back to school and flu, and lots of clinics, August and September, so we saw, had over 1,400 people in our office or in the clinics, July through September, so that's, keeps us busy. We, that's also one of our busiest times for income with, as you can see in August, with back-to-school immunizations, those childhood immunizations, receiving close to $80,000 in revenue to help cover the cost of the immunizations and staff for that, and a total of $154,000. The write-offs for individuals who have difficulty paying fit on our sliding fee scale, or if for some reason we have to write it off because it's uncollectible, that amount for this quarter is $849.72, and would appreciate your approval to write those, that amount off, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer that.
Cut and dried, do it pretty much on a regular basis. Any questions on this? If there's no questions.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Midge, you know, our AMR service, they take care of write-offs, and we also have, is a collection agency? Have you thought about doing something like that, or is just, they're not worth pursuing?
Yeah, a lot of them are $20, $40, they're pretty small amounts, and by the time you take that percentage out for the collection agency, it's minimal that we would recover. The other real issue for us, I think a lot of that comes out of individuals who seek family planning services as well, or parents who, their children, children's immunizations that are, for some reason, they're not, their insurance doesn't cover fully, and so, and in the process, we sometimes bill insurance that doesn't pay, but then you've got a $600 bill for the parent who then over time, I mean, they just can't pay that, I don't know how to explain all that, but sometimes it comes back and hits us in the face. And it's so important that the children are immunized, we choose to write those off, that the, the other issue, we didn't, we feel like it's a small enough amount, that the individuals who don't, we don't want people to not seek services, and if we go after people, then they will not come back. And some of those services, particularly family planning and immunizations, we feel like it's more important that they receive that service than we collect that small amount of funds, so that's our philosophy on that.
And it's a pretty small amount concerning the total services that are provided.
Yeah, it really is, in my opinion, so.
Yeah.
There's a reason if you can't afford a $20 bill, you probably can't afford a child, so it's good health policy.
All right, would look for a motion to approve the Health Department third quarter write-offs in the amount of $849.72.
Motion to approve.
Motions are second.
Second.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes. Okay, item number two, consider and approve a final plat of Shawnee Estates Phase 5 subdivision located at the intersection of Shawnee Terrace and K-33 Highway. Larry.
As you've indicated, Mr. Chairman, this is a request for the consideration of the final plat for the Fifth Amendment to the Shawnee Estates subdivision. That's what was brought about because the property adjacent to the lot that has the development has decided that it would like to acquire the vacant lot next door so that they could extend their building across the property line. They could either have sought a variance and got it close to the property line, they would've been into easements and other things that were established as a part of that original subdivision plat, so in order to correct that situation, they have opted to prepare and go through the process of merging those two lots together, which does require then the replating of the two lots to eliminate the easements and other property lines that were on that common boundary between the, the two existing lots. The Planning Commission gave consideration to that a little earlier this year, and have approved it. We are here today for you to accept their recommendation and to accept the, any new easements, which there aren't any, and to recognize the dilation of the easements that were formally accepted and approved with respect to utility easements primarily within the common boundary of the previously existing subdivision plat. So that's basically all it is, is just the merger of the two lots into a single lot.
Pretty well explained. Any questions on it? I would look for a motion to approve a final plat of Shawnee Estates Phase 5 subdivision located in the intersection of Shawnee Terrace and K-33 Highway. Motion to approve.
Second.
Of a motion as a second.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes. Okay, item number three, consider and approve a spatial use permit application 1909, day 1705, to permit the operation of an oilfield equipment sales, repair, service, and outdoor storage facility in a L1 zone.
This is a request to allow for the equipment sales, repair, and service for oilfield equipment. There have been a number of uses on this property, I think most of you are familiar where it is. It's adjacent to the off-ramp of I-35 that would go into the Wellsville area, that comes onto K-33 and then turns north into Wellsville. This is located at that southwest corner of the two intersecting streets. This has had a number of commercial and light industrial activities on that property for a number of years. The last being the repair of RVs, and there've been, I think most of you have seen, a lot of those that have been out there recently, they are being removed even as we speak here today, but this business is a business that's been currently operating in Wellsville for some period of time, but they are being displaced to a certain degree because of the improvements on K-33 for the overpass for the railroad, and that takes away their basic access, so in doing so, they still like to remain in Franklin County and in the same general area, so they have been looking for a site for some period of time, and this one become available, but it does require the approval of the spatial use permit. The Planning Commission gave consideration to that earlier last month, and have recommended approval based on certain findings that are listed in your staff report, as well as some conditions that are operational conditions that the applicant will have to comply with. I really have nothing further to add, just like I said, it's an existing business, it's been in the community for a number of years, and what they'd like to do is retain a location here in Franklin County adjacent to the Wellsville area.
Look at their current operation and the way they maintain it, they certainly won't be a detriment, they'd keep a clean, I mean, for being oilfield equipment, everything's tidy and they're good tenants, so you would hate to put a detriment right there, front and center entrance to the community, but I think it's a pretty safe bet, given their history in the county, that they won't be.
One of the difficulties was trying to come up with some screening, and I think most of you are aware that the off-ramp elevates as it approaches K-33, and it, this property is much lower than what that off-ramp is. It's almost impossible to adequately screen that, because you'd have to have screening, you know, 30 feet high, in order to properly screen it to where it's not visible from the interstate, and the Planning Commission recognized that, and therefore they have modified the conditions to try to accommodate the use with the, with some screening, but they realize that they're not gonna be possible to really adequately screen that, as we would perhaps like to see it in, in a different setting.
I remember being at the Planning Commission when they were discussing this, is the owner okay with the conditions that are being put upon them?
Yes.
Any else on this? I would look for a motion to approve spatial use permit 1909, day 1705, to permit the operation of an oilfield equipment sales, repair, service, and outdoor storage facility in a light industrial zoning district.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion as a second.
Second.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes. Okay, what we had here. Here it takes us to item number four, consider and approve application 1909, day 1707, to rezone approximately 7.75 acres from an A2 transitional agriculture to a C2 highway commercial zone, together with a spatial use permit to allow the construction and operation of a mini storage facility. Larry.
As you've indicated, this is kind of a double-headed action that's being sought here this morning. The Planning Commission gave consideration to this through their public hearing process, and in October, the Planning Commission has forwarded a recommendation to you for the approval of the rezoning, to rezone the property from the A2, which is a transitional agricultural district, to the C2 zone. This property is located contiguous to I-35, and it would again be continuous to an off-ramp of I-35 and Idaho Road. This property was acquired as a part of the RV park, and when the property was sold, it was sold as one large tract of land, we went through rezoning at that time, taking away the commercial zoning and putting it all into the A2 zone, which was the predominant zone for the RV park, with the assumption that sooner or later they would be expanding that park, but the owner of that park decided they would get out of the business, and they sold it. This individual feels that the park is adequate the size that it is, and would like to get their commercial zoning back, so that's, and by the way, that would be the first zoning district that would be available for many storage facilities. So they are looking at doing the spatial use permit in the C2 zone to allow for the construction of some mini storage facilities. Again, this is a fairly low-profile use, it doesn't require sanitation, it doesn't require water, and it certainly doesn't require, because of the occupancy, doesn't require sprinkled buildings, and therefore it's something that can be constructed in these more rural areas where we don't have the capabilities of meeting all the building code requirements necessary for commercial investments. The Planning Commission, after reviewing this, has forwarded a recommendation to you for the approval of the rezoning, and the approval of the spatial use permit, subject to the findings and the conditions set forth in that draft resolution that you had. This is a pretty straightforward project, like I say, it's about as low-profile use that we could see at that particular intersection, which by the way, the comprehensive plan proposes for future commercial types of activities.
Questions on that one?
No, I did talk to Larry a little bit, I was curious, and I went out there, and he explained how the property owner really cleaned that up out there, and it's a much nicer site even before he'd done this, so it sounds like he's trying to do a quality thing on that site.
With that, would look for a motion to approve application 1909, day 1707, to rezone approximately 7.75 acres from an A2 transitional to a C2 highway commercial.
Motion to approve.
At a second.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes. Takes us to item number five, consider and approve rezoning application 1909, 1710, to rezone approximately 33.95 acres from an A2 transitional agriculture district to an A1 agricultural district.
This is somewhat of an unusual request, but typically we're going the other way with the rezoning from a large tract to smaller tracts, but in this case, we're taking a smaller tract, a portion of us in a smaller tract, and putting it together, which now creates a tract that would require the A2, or from the A2 zoning to the A1, because it exceeds the, the 40 acres, which is the minimum lot size for the A1 zone, but exceeds the maximum for the A2 zoning district. There was a boundary line adjustment that was done a few years ago, wherein the property owner gave a portion of the property to a relative, and now she wants to give a little bit more, so that, that one increases, but still stays within the framework of the zoning district in which it's currently zoned. However, the remainder now goes back to her, and that now creates a larger tract that no longer meets the, our minimum standards for the appropriate zoning district, so that's the reason for this request is to align the zoning commensurate with the size of the parcels that are going to exist as a result of the boundary line adjustment. The Planning Commission has forwarded a recommendation to you for the approval of this request, and frankly, I have nothing to add unless any of you have questions.
One. All right, with that, would look for a motion to approve rezoning application 1909, day 1710, to rezone approximately 33.95 acres from an A2 to an A1 district.
Don't move.
Motions are second.
Second.
Motion's second, Jen.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
Yeah.
Chair Howard.
Yes. Okay, takes us, here's this one, Larry. Takes us staff reports, Derek.
Yeah, bear with me, I have a handful of things today. First, if you haven't been over by the jail, the jail roof is currently in the process of being replaced, and they've made a ton of progress on that, and I always like to talk to the public about the jail, because if you look at where that building was three years ago versus where it is now, it's really astonishing how different it is. I mean, you've got new HVAC in there now, we have a new roof going on, the detox cells have been completely redone, Jeff and his guys have put paint on the inside, they've put new carpet in there and parts, we've talked about, you know, raising the starting salaries of our jailers, which is gonna happen, they've going to happen, they've got a new jail administrator, that place, it's really exciting to see how much that, that has improved in such a short amount of time, so.
Without incurred debt.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely no debt associated with any of that, so, so yeah, if you haven't been over there, you might go check that out. I'm glad you brought up debt, Colt. So, we get a lot of our telecommunications services through AT&amp;T and they've recently subbed out a lot of their contracts to a group called the Coyote Group, so they've reached out to us about assuming our contracts. And Dustin took the opportunity to renegotiate with them and he was able to lower our services about $450 a month. Now, we have a $30 million budget, $450 a month, that's only $5,000, but that's really a microcosm of what all of our department heads are doing every day. I mean, we've, we have preached that for the last three years and, and we've really seen dividends. I mean, three years ago, when Janet and I started doing this, our reserve balance and, I mean, we have our two main reserve accounts, it was at about $500,000 between the two. At the end of 19, we're projecting that to be almost $3 million. And, and this is all while we have, I mean, you look at the projects that we have done, the jail stuff, the stuff we've done in this building, the old courthouse, there's no way we do all of that without department heads like Dustin who are buying into the vision and, and working hard to save the county money every day. And so, I know you guys have heard a lot about roads and rightfully so, and, and we don't hear about the good things enough, but I'm not sure how you can look at, at this government and what we've done the last few years and, and not be impressed with the fiscal responsibility that's been demonstrated. Our audits have reflected that, our bond rating has increased, which is a reflection of that. I struggle to find a financial metric that we haven't improved upon. And so, I hope you, as the commissioners, are proud, I'm certainly proud of my staff because they have just done a heck of a good job with that and, and we will continue to do the same. And, and that's, it's also what's exciting, Janet and I talk all the time, in some ways, we've really just scratched the surface of the savings that we can find. And so, we'll continue doing that and hopefully every year at budget time, we're able to come forward with new ways that we can find efficiencies and save some money, so. I, so, commute down here and a couple of things have been catching my eye that I want to, I want to talk about. So, the new corner market there across from the courthouse, Lloyd Builders did such a good job with that building, like the curb appeal there, like it, it's really caught my eye every time I've drove by and I started thinking, normally I come down Hickory and go by the old post office, that building is beautiful, I mean, the, the detail there, the landscaping around it is beautiful, and then of course, there's Legacy Square, which if you look at is, has really improved that part of the city. And, and Lloyd Builders was affiliated with all of those projects and they, they just do a really good job. And, and so I, you know, I, I look forward to seeing what they, you know, what projects they have coming up because they've really, they've taken some areas that maybe weren't, weren't in the best shape and, and really turned them around. Lastly, Casey is here this morning. Casey is, Casey is our new communications director and I'm going to have her come up and talk a little bit, but this would be her fourth day, super excited about having her. We've got a good plan in place, she's got great ideas, and one of the things that's been noteworthy to me is I, and I'm being very literal here, I have not went one place with her, not a single place where I haven't had somebody stop us and talk to her and congratulate her and tell me what a great hire we've made. And so, we've got a known commodity, I, I think the sky's the limit on what we are going to be able to accomplish. And so, having a department head breakfast in the morning where I'm going to formally introduce her to all of the department heads, we're going to talk about priorities for her, also hope to sit down with all of you to discuss what your priorities are in terms of things we can communicate, but we're, obviously, the plan is to really increase our social media presence, we've got plans for how we want to handle our COFO interviews every week, so I, I think, you know, all of the things we talk about doing well, we talk about them in these meetings, but we know it's only reaching a certain segment of the community. My hope is that bringing her on board will be able to reach obviously a lot more people. So, Casey, if you want to come up and, and say.
Communicate with her.
Introduce, please. Well, good morning, I'm Casey Brady, former, or my maiden name is Watts, I was born and raised here in Franklin County, out on the west, southwest side of town. I love this community and I'm happy to be a part of it, I'm very excited to raise my family here and I'm really excited for the opportunity to work for the county and get the, like Derek said, spread the good news of everything that we're doing and really, the sky is the limit. I'm ready to take any suggestions or talk with you about anything that you, you would like to see moving forward, so thanks for having me and.
Well, welcome aboard, we're glad to have you.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate that. Any questions for me or anything?
I'll chat.
Okay. I'll give you my number.
Casey, are you in your, are you at the visitor's center now? Is that where you're going to be?
I'm kind of mobile right now, I'm at the visitor's center and the courthouse, so.
We, we have a workstation set up for her at the visitor's center, that will probably be her primary location. For the time being, she spent a lot of time in the courthouse because she, I mean, she's just started, so, I mean, there's been so much communication with me, but as she settles in, I would expect her to spend more time out there, but just given the nature of her job, I think she's going to be fairly mobile, I mean, that's just part of what she does, you know, going to each department and checking out what they have going on, communicating with their department heads. No, we, we have her primary setup out at the visitor's center.
Well, I think that we all agree that Franklin County's an awesome place, so we just need you to communicate that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Anything else, Derek? Larry, you have anything else?
I'm just, I'm trying to form a review that we do have the planning commission attending hearing on the renewed energy facility at 6:30 on the 21st. Hopefully, we can get through that process with the planning commission and get this matter forward to the, for a final act.
Guess she's already said what she had to say, Paul, you have anything else you want to say?
Okay, commissioners, yesterday, we had a progress meeting on 59 and Kingman, we try to do those every couple of weeks. As you drive through there, you're noticing lots of work being done, they are rapidly wrapping that project up. They said yesterday that their hope is to be finished and demobilized by the 21st of this month. Of course, all that's weather dependent, but they are, that is their goal and they're working hard to, to meet that. So they should be laying asphalt on the west side of the road next week and then it's just a matter of striping and, and getting things buttoned up. So they're, they're really close on that and, and we're excited that they're going to be completely done, even a little ahead of schedule. Last week, I mentioned Jackson Road, the large culvert there, that we got that open right before the snow and ice and whatnot, there's a little bit of cleanup work to be done on that, our folks are out there, supposed to be out there today, getting that wrapped up. We're also wrapping up the, the last little bit of dirt work and whatnot on the Idaho Road Bridge. We had built some temporary dams to kind of hold back the, the flow of water so that we could get in there and work. Once we got the, the bridge completed, it was really too wet for us to get down there, but we're hoping to, to get down there today and, and get that cleaned up, get those, those dams knocked down and do some dirt work to, to clean that up so that the adjacent farmers and landowners can utilize that area. I think it's important that, that we thank the, the Kaylers and the Johnsons for allowing us to work essentially off right of way to be able to work on that bridge. Without their cooperation and, and allowing us to do that, this project would have been a lot more expensive and a lot more time consuming, so really appreciate them partnering with us to allow us to, to get in there and do that. We, you know, generally, landowners are willing to let us do that kind of work, but it's, it's, it's not something that they have to do, and so I really appreciate them working with us. Our crews have also been placing patch in a lot of our county subdivisions around, you know, there's, there's a pretty good need for that and we'll continue monitoring that situation and, and take care of the, the holes that we find out about. We have removed a lot of the rock material from the 4400 Jackson Road area, we had done several different times this year, that area kept getting washed out and so we're able to, our guys were able to get in and, and remove a lot of that material. We also removed a bunch in the Hamilton and Nebraska Road areas. They, they tell me that there's almost two miles of ditches that they cleaned out here recently. Built a couple entrances, new entrances, 801 Stafford and 422, 422 Utah, new, new entrances, took care of those, had a large washout on Douglas West of Kentucky that was repaired and we also repaired two large holes on Ellis Terrace east of, east of Indiana. We continue to find those and we continue, so. We had to close the 4200 block of Kentucky Terrace this week, we had another crossroad culvert that was undermined, so the guys went in and uncovered it. The tube itself was still in good shape, which was a benefit, so they set it aside, cleaned out the, the trench, reset the, the culvert and then covered it up and then armored the, the ends of it to help with any future erosion issues. So that, that was positive that we're able to save a little money by being able to reuse that, that culvert. Also, Hamilton Road east of Nevada, it's a, it's a minimum maintenance road, but it's certainly doesn't look like a minimum maintenance road, but we had a lot of mud and, and whatnot that was tracked onto the road from some, from the harvest, made the road almost impassable for the, the landowner that actually has a, has a house kind of down at the end of that road, so we had to go in and clean that up and add some more rock so they could safely travel that. And the last thing, I failed to mention last week that on the 25th, we had sent, we sent five of our staff members to a snow and ice training, so we continue to do that and then actually tomorrow, we've got another group going to some bridge maintenance training through the LTAP program again. So we continue to look for training opportunities and, and try to cycle as many of our folks through that as we can.
Busy day yesterday?
A little bit. Yeah, we're going to be having our audit board this morning, pretty much immediately following this meeting, we're going to be, it's a new process that was adopted by the legislature and this will be our first time to do it, so I have a small audit board that'll be reviewing a couple precincts and hand counting those ballots to verify the results. As you know, we've put on the calendar next Friday for the canvas and we'll do that down at the courthouse like we always do, so.
What time is that?
15th, right?
Yes, I believe you said nine. Going away in our office and getting all those results ready and.
What was that date, Janet?
Friday, the 15th.
At nine.
Oh, the 15th, okay.
Okay, let's appreciate the community partners being here, I know you've had a busy month out there, we'll get you on the agenda here in the next month or so and you can give us an update, I know you've had a lot of stuff going and you have anything coming up in November that we, you want to tell?
We have our match campaign, so all of our donations throughout the end of the year will be matched up until the 30th.
They do a lot of work out there and raise a lot of money with their different projects that they, they put on, thank goodness they do, it takes a lot of money to run that place, so. Takes us to commissioner comments and board reports. Roy, you want to start?
Okey dokey. Yesterday morning, I went to the Lake Region Resource Conservation and Development meeting here at the Annex and our main speaker was supposed to be Shelley Underwood, but her partner Phil Fishburne was her guest speaker and then he's from Midwest Assistance Program and this program helps small communities and rural areas in kind of major projects like rural water districts or even rural sanitary districts also. And he talked about their operation, gives assistance, free assistance to small communities and help them develop these, these issues for sanitation and, and clean water. And he, he talked about some projects over in, in Land County, trying to help them establish this sewer district and I think a water district too, wasn't it, Larry? Yeah. There's, there's help available that you, some of these small communities don't realize is available and instead of hiring engineering firms and spending a lot of money doing studies, there's some of these programs like this, this, they, they represent. And Don might want to say a couple of things more about that. Don continues to take bicycles out to Ellsworth and bring bicycles back and, and also the Feed the Hunter Program just getting started too, now the deer season is open, so got that project going on too. And Don might want to talk a little bit more about the bike program or feeding hungry and these issues. Last night, I went to the Board of Zoning Appeals to hear about cell phone towers and the main thing I got, got out of that is a lot of people need high-speed internet in the, in the, in the country, not just for home businesses, but just, just to go to school itself, because a lot of these schools now have, a lot of their programs are online, program, online studies and that sort of thing and you need high-speed internet to access and, and do these things, so. That was the main thing I got out of it, then the big issue last night was the, the setback of these, these towers, our zoning now requires 35, have a 35-foot tower, it'll probably fit on about any, any lot size you have. Once you go above 35 foot, every foot you go up, you got to have another five-foot setback. And this tower that this gentleman wanted would have been about over two times, his lot would have had to have been about two times wider or bigger than he had just, just for the setback for this 80-foot cell tower, so. And that, that was the variance he was requesting was basically the, the way that variant, the way that setback distance for this 80-foot tower. a way that setback distance for this eighty-foot tower. And, uh, it passed, so I, I'll see, I can see more of these, um, requests coming in just because of the need for high, high-speed internet in, in the country. And that's all I got, Rick.
I, I can see that this could come before us and I know Farm Bureau is talking about, you know, getting high-speed internet out into the rural areas. And it's going to be something that is going to keep happening. I am going to thank Mother Nature for kind of holding off a little bit so that we can actually make some headway on the, the roads. That's pretty awesome. Um, I did go to the Corner Market Chamber Coffee and you can always tell how excited people are about things when, by the crowd that's there. And it was a nice, large crowd that was there, I think. You know, and we ta- I, I talked there about quality of life, that really this is an exciting time to be in this community, in this county. Um, great things are happening. Um, then I went to the First Friday Forum, which was very interesting because Steve Fiziak, who is the, uh, uh, radio announcer and TV announcer for the Kansas City Royals, was the speaker. Um, you know, it's exciting to have somebody that was right there in the middle of all that when we were, uh, winning the World Series. And then I, on Monday evening, I went to the Princeton City Council Meeting. Um, they're just kind of wrapping up some projects, um, the roads. Um, they're still working on their, uh, playground. Um, they're planning, uh, Santa and, uh, first Saturday in, um, December, um, soup and, I think chili supper that they have. Um, and then trying to get through the end of the year and still stay under budget is going to be a challenge. But I think probably all the small towns are kind of working with the same thing and that's it.
Hospital meeting that normally attended was canceled for this month, so.
I kind of elaborated a little, little more on Roy's. Uh, we did our RCD meeting yesterday. Been working with Midwest Assistance Program and I kind of did a little background before we got into talking with them. And I know projects they've done for Lynn Valley Lakes in Lynn County and Mount City and Burlington and Richmond and Williamsburg and Fontana. And I talked to all their city clerks and all of them are really pleased with what, there's just not enough people know about it. I didn't even know about it till Rick brought it out to me. And so, uh, in fact, they do a lot of work for KDHE. They contract, uh, for training and stuff for water systems and sewer systems and budgets and infrastructure and a lot of stuff I didn't have a clue till we started checking into them. We had him here yesterday. And we're going to try to set up a deal for each county and, and possibly and have, uh, some study sessions with them with the smaller towns to inform them what this organization and maybe bring a couple of the towns from each one that they've already served and done work for. And so, you know, anytime you bring in a government, you think it's a government project, there's, there's a lot of skepticism of what they're doing there, what they're for. But this is actually a nonprofit organization that just gets grants and funding from the government. They're not really the government. So anyhow, uh, we hope to carry it out. I give, uh, uh, our Economic Development Department a little of the background and, and literature on it. And hopefully I can bring it to him too. He can help me or, or be in the right direction or have him be a part or, or however he feels that, that would do Franklin County the best, you know. I did attend the rental meeting the other night, pretty light schedule. Uh, they're still discussing the rural courts system with some of the small towns. Uh, Mayor Parks had been off for a while for medical reasons and he was back and looking good. So everybody's very pleased to see the mayor back. I'm sure, uh, City of Wellsville is probably happy this morning that their, their sales tax passed yesterday, which failed the last time around. But, and I think it's, it's going to be dedicated to infrastructure and, and you can see from what's going on up there that they need the money for infrastructure to keep things moving and going forward. So that's all I got.
Rick, if I can jump in there-
Sure, I'll be there.
-right quick. Um, you'll recall the board dedicated seventy-five thousand dollars to one of Wellsville's projects and they let us know that, um, they're, it's not their intention to use it this budget year. They still intend to next year. But I, I don't know if that's a reflection of their schedule, the schedule that they're on. And I don't know, Don, or you David, if you know exactly what-
I assume that it's got to do with the fact that they are, there's so much construction going on out there.
Yeah.
And they want, yeah. I would imagine they're wanting to wait until that construction is complete. They rebuild that intersection. And I think KDOT is still involved, uh, with them on K thirty-three as well. That could be a contributing factor as well. In fact, uh, last week when I was at the, uh, open console meeting, I met with our area engineer and we had a conversation about, about K thirty-three through Wellsville. And she is in agreement with me that, um, something more than what they are currently planning needs to be done. As of all the, uh, development going on right now, it's just going to lead to additional development down the road. KDOT needs to invest. Out here, let's not spend dollars twice. And so-
It's, I think, it's nice that, I think the board made a, a great decision to contribute to that project. And, and the fact that the Wellsville community clearly supports it by passing that sales tax. I mean, you know, we talk about it being an exciting time for this community. Well, you know, Wellsville's in a very similar spot, so that's, it's exciting.
Okay. Um, I attended Williamsburg City Council meeting Monday night. Uh, before I get in, I just want to say that, uh, one of the problems with being elections yesterday, a lot of our small cities have a real challenge in filling their council seats when they come open and so forth. Uh, there's a lot of people out there that are not willing to serve and a lot of people that just don't have the time and stuff to serve. Um, reason I'm bringing this up with Williamsburg City Council, their mayor did not file for reelection this year. And, uh, he, they're losing a very good mayor. He has been excellent for that town. I do know there was no one that filed for the mayor. I do know his name was written in several times. Hopefully-
He has told me he will not accept if he-
He's told me that too, but we're, we're not finished working on him quite yet. But anyway, I don't know how that's, hopefully we could, uh, tie him into it because, uh, he's been good for that town. And I know he's put a lot of work and effort into it and feels he needs a little bit of a break, but, uh, hopefully we can-
What about the Princeton there? Is that the same situation with him? Because he didn't file either, did he? Princeton?
I don't know.
Lanes didn't.
Lanes in the same problem.
Huh?
Lanes in the same problem. He announced that, uh, their meeting not to write him in. But, uh, he, Phil Testor did a great job down there a lot of years and, and, uh, then nobody wanted to see him, not. But, uh, I guess you'll wait and see what happens.
There was someone from Princeton that came in after the filing deadline that said, "Oh shoot, I just didn't get in here in time." I think it might have been the mayor. So I think that he was going to try to do a write-in. I, I don't recall.
So hopefully we can in the future get more people involved and want to step up and serve on those spots. Um, at the meeting, they talked about the street project, uh, that they've been looking into. Wanting to chip and seal all their city streets. They're still looking into that and, uh, ways to pay for that and whatever. Um, talked about computer and software upgrades, city hall improvements. Um, their new business was talking about, uh, the holiday weekend, Christmas holiday weekend and sending their clerk to, uh, training in Iola. And their twenty-eighteen audit was, had been completed. That was most of what was on Williamsburg. Then yesterday morning, attended the, uh, executive board meeting for FCDC. Uh, we've touched a little bit on that. Uh, Paul's first meeting with us. I think there are going to be some good meetings coming forth. This was a pretty quick one. We talked about the annual banquet, which is November the nineteenth. Um, changed some signatures on the checking around and, uh, talked about the office and some different, uh, logistics in the office. And, uh, touched a little bit on Proximity Park and some of our, uh, marketing out there, where we're at with that and where we want to go with that. Didn't get into that a lot. Paul wanted to do a lot more checking into some things before we got into that, so. Derek, if you've got anything you want to add on that, that's pretty quick on it.
Uh, I would just say that if, and, and we can push the invite out to all of you, but if, if you can make it to the annual banquet, I think that'd be great. Um, it's kind of an exciting time for FCDC. Show your support for the organization. I, I don't know, Paul, do you know exactly when in the evening it starts? Is that the old post office?
It'd be, uh, Sacred Heart.
Sacred Heart, you're right, yeah.
The invitation just went out this morning. I got it during the meeting.
Okay, okay. Well, we'll, we'll push it out to all of you. If you can make it, that'd be great.
Okay, that's all I have. Uh, and I lost my computer for a second here, so, do the paper.
Rick, before you call this thing, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm chatty today, but do you-
That's fine.
Do you want to talk about next week's meetings with-
Yeah, I was just getting to that. I, I lost it on there.
With KAC, we could probably make the decision to, it's your call, but we're, we won't have a quorum here Wednesday.
Right.
And I, as I sit here, I don't believe that Monday, um-
Uh, it's a county holiday, so.
Monday is a county holiday?
Yeah.
Adjournment day.
Okay, so I would assume there will be no meetings next week. Like Derek said, four of us I think are going to be gone from Monday until sometime Thursday anyway, so. We'll, uh, then we'll be back on Thursday and we will do the, uh, canvas on Friday at nine o'clock. And then after that, I see that we have, we'll have a commission meeting on November the twentieth. And that's, anything else?
I might say that, uh, Saturday is the Veterans Day Parade, uh, in Ottawa, starting about ten o'clock, I think it is. Activities in Forest Park, uh, in the afternoon. A lot of the area schools had lunches on Monday for veterans, so. There's a lot of veterans' activities and got a real nice display down there in, in City Park now and, and flags around Courthouse Square. So it's, uh, always good to remember our veterans on Veterans Day.
Boy, who did the figures for the military figures?
Uh, Ray, you made set up that, uh-
They're nice.
Yeah.
It's really impressive. Anybody that hasn't been down there.
It's kind of a Korean War, uh, air deal display.
It, it's really nice.
Okay. If you want to have anything else, a lot would look for a motion to adjourn. Have a motion second.
Okay.
Motion second, all in favor.
All right.
All opposed, word-